You ready? Regular meeting number 61 will now come to order. Would you please stand for the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Page, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are pleased to be joined by Senior Pastor of Hope City House of Prayer, Pastor Brian Williams. And before Pastor Williams begins his prayer, I think it's appropriate that we take a moment of silence out of respect and as we remember the life and service of our 41st President, George Herbert Walker Bush. Please join me. Thank you, Pastor.
Well, thank you for the honor to be here tonight. Let's pray. Lord, we come before you tonight on behalf of this city, and Lord, we ask for your wisdom in all the proceedings of tonight and in the days to come. We recognize that Columbus is a blessed city because of your favor, and so we ask you tonight to lead and guide us as decisions are made that will affect the livelihood and the well-being of those who call this city their home. We ask that you would give confidence to those who we have elected to lead us, and you would give us wisdom to continue to serve in this great city of Columbus. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading over the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Thank you. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I have one resolution. I would like to ask retired Lieutenant General Farader and Mr. Guy Wardley to please come forward. Whereas on Saturday, October 27th, the National Veterans Memorial and Museum opened in Columbus, Ohio with the mission to honor Americans' contributions to our country through military service, connect citizens with veterans and their experience, inspire visitors to serve their community and nation as engaged citizens, and educate schoolchildren about the history and value of service. Whereas the National Veterans Memorial Museum began with a vision from the late Ohio Senator John Glenn, who understood the pressing needs to carefully preserve not only the names, dates, and battles, but the intimate memories, personal belongings, and painful losses of our nation's veterans. And whereas the exhibits displayed in the National Veterans Memorial and Museum are designed with input from a committee of veterans and active-duty personnel to ensure not only an accurate depiction of military service, but an emotional security that is unique from other wartime museums. And whereas the National Veterans Memorial Museum project was managed by the Columbus Downtown Development Corporation and its president and CEO, Guy Wardley, with the help of architects Allied Works Architecture, landscape designers OLNIN, exhibit designers Ralph Alba Baum Associates, and builders Turner Construction, and CBD C has created a landmark structure that highlights the Scioto Peninsula. And whereas retired Lieutenant General Michael Farader will serve as the inaugural president and CEO of the National Veterans Memorial Museum after serving 35 years with the United States Army, and now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council is hereby commemorate the opening of the National Veterans Memorial Museum in Columbus, Ohio, and commends all the members of the armed forces that served and have served this great country. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Guy Wardley, the floor is yours, and then we'd like to hear from Lieutenant General.
Well, thank you, Councilman Brown, President Harden, members of council. It's a pleasure to be back here today. As former Chief of Staff for Mayor Michael B. Coleman, I had many opportunities to be here, but I haven't in quite some time. So it's always a pleasure to be back in City Hall and working with our council members. But to Councilman Brown's point, we're here to basically thank the people of Columbus and our citizens and our council, our mayor, and all of our elected officials, because in order to make this a National Veterans Memorial Museum, it truly was a public-private partnership. And as Councilman Brown pointed out, this was the vision of our late Senator John Glenn, and there's been a lot of stories told and a lot of publications have talked about this being a national memorial. But I want to tell one story, and that story is when we were going to Congress and asking for them to designate this memorial and museum as the National Veterans Memorial Museum, we had the opportunity to talk to 55 different congressmen from all over the United States. And the question that I would get asked almost every time was, "Why Columbus, Ohio?" And frankly, my answer was, "Why not?" But really, my answer was, because the people and the citizens of Columbus are passionate about our veterans, and they wanted to honor our veterans, and they took the initiative to raise $82 million. And we're building it, and therefore, we need your support. And frankly, both sides of the aisle, Senator Brown, Senator Portman, Congresswoman Beatty, Congressman Stivers, came together, sponsored legislation, and that legislation passed unanimously in both the House and the Senate. The president signed the bill this summer, and we opened in October. So really, a great credit to our community to step forward and do something like this for our veterans was a privilege to be part of. That being said, in order for it to truly be national, we needed a recognized national leader, someone with the credentials who has earned the respect of our country's 22 million veterans. And that gentleman is Lieutenant General Michael Farader, who jumped out of airplanes 200 times with his Army Rangers, three tours in Iraq, one in Somalia, basically ran 75 different Army bases around the world. And we chose him to be our leader. We needed a world-class leader. I think we'd chosen one, and General Farader. So with that, General, thank you for being our CEO, and welcome to Columbus, and please share your thoughts.
Thank you, Guy. President Harden, Congress, Councilor Brown, ladies and gentlemen. It's, you know, I always start by saying it's a great day to be, and then I look to see where I was. So it's a great day to be in Columbus, Ohio. I got a phone call on the 11th of May asking if I'd be interested in being the founding president and CEO of the National Veterans Memorial Museum, and I said, "Great, where is it?" And they said, "Columbus." And I said, "Great, I'm right here in Columbus, Georgia." And they said, "No, it's in Columbus, Ohio." And I said, "Great," and I'm on my way. You know, I'm humbled to stand with you today, and thank you for your service to so many members of the city of Columbus, Ohio. I'm honored to take this position with the trust and confidence and respect of Guy Wardley and everyone that's backing this idea. Margie and I have been married for 39 years, and we've moved around a lot. And I would tell you that this is the warmest and friendliest town we've ever lived in. We took a place in the arena district so we could walk to work holding hands and call it a date. And, but there's more eye contact on your streets than anyplace I've ever been, and people nod and wave to you and say hello, and so it's a very comforting for us. We feel like, as we started a month and a week ago, that this was not a, this is a startup, but it's not a break-in, where we didn't have to fight our way into town, and we didn't have, we didn't have to take market share from anybody. Everyone is wrapped their arms around the museum and the memorial idea. We hear every day now things like, "Wow, you really got this right." And "I wish my dad was still alive." And "I gotta get my brother here or sister here." And "Granddad, who thought of doing this for you?" And the answer is Columbus did, and you did, and all the support that you've given us and will give us, I thank you for that, and I look forward to being in my hometown of Columbus, Ohio for a very long period of time. Thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
General, first of all, thank you for your service to our country, and thank you for taking on this initiative. I've had the opportunity to be there a couple of times, including on Veterans Day. It is truly a national treasure to be able to take our veterans and just celebrate all that they have done for this country, not any war, not any particular branch of service, but all of the veterans that are alive today and the ones from the past. So I want to thank you for taking on this charge and all the effort that's gone into it, and for, put a shout-out to those that have not been there that live within the area to make sure that they take the time to take it. Everything from being an architectural, you know, first of its kind, you know, architecturally, to every exhibit that's in there, it's really, truly special. And so, thank you. I'm proud that you're across the river and that you're a part of the city of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Again, again, gentlemen, thank you very, very much. And again, I'm sure that if George Herbert Walker Bush could be here, he would as well. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Remy. Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to invite Robert Seed and Sherri Palmer to the podium, along with Bob's wife, as I introduce Resolution 0383-X, 2018, to recognize, celebrate, and congratulate Mr. Robert Seed on his retirement from the city of Columbus this past week, November 30th, 2018. Robert was selflessly, has selflessly served as the Keep Columbus Beautiful Community Relations Coordinator since 2002, and has worked for the city of Columbus since 1994. In his time with the city, Bob has planned key logistics for the Kick Butt Columbus Initiative, which drew 4,430 volunteers who cleaned up 1,321 ramps and 329 interchanges throughout the city. Bob has also worked with 7,114 neighborhood cleanups involving 161,065 Columbus residents over his distinguished career. I share these numbers with you not just to show how important Robert's work is to our city and to our neighborhoods, but also how impactful Robert has been in engaging and energizing our Columbus residents to volunteer, clean up, and take pride in the community. Bob, we thank you for your hard work and tireless work, and hope you enjoy spending time with your wife, children, and grandchildren. We hope they know how, we hope they know how thankful we are for your advocacy and hard work, helping Columbus become a greener and cleaner community. Thank you, and now I'll turn it over to Sherri to say a few words.
Well, pardon me. It's really not about me, but it is all about Bob, and we've always said that. President Harden and Councilmember Remy and all of city council who have supported the Keep Columbus Beautiful program, this is a landmark moment. We are now down to me, and we have lost a great servant who's going on to do, I'm sure, more exciting things for our community. And I can also tell you that thanks to Director Gallagher and all of your support, we have two new, younger versions of the Bob and the Stacy Laws of our program who are coming on board, and I can tell you that 2019, we're going to be awesome. I want to thank Bob especially for his ongoing passion, his individualized caring about each and every person that he worked with. When our new person, Heather Pennington, asked what I was looking for in someone, I said, "You have to do what Bob did," and that was, "Just listen. People want to be heard, and that's the most important thing." Thank you all. I wish you joyous and safe holidays, and I turn this over to Bob Seed.
Well, thank you for the recognition, and I just might say that the difficulty in leaving is the joy in serving the people of our city. We've got a great, great group of people, and that's why it's hard to leave. But I look forward to spending more time with my grandkids. Ruth and I, we have 12 grandkids, and they're starting to learn how to text, so, you know, you've got to stay on top of that. But it's been a great joy to work in this program, and I have a lot of positive feelings, and I know that next year will be a great year for Keep Columbus Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I do have a quick announcement. This week, I will convene three public hearings, each here in council chambers. On Wednesday, December 5th, at 5:00 PM, the Housing and Economic Development and Small Business Committee will have the budget hearing. On Thursday, December 6th, at 4:00 PM, I will convene a hearing on the proposed retaliatory eviction legislation, and that will be followed by our Judiciary and Court Administration budget hearing at 5:00 PM. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. Also want to announce upcoming hearing. Last week, members of council, along with Mayor Ginther, announced proposed reforms to our city's campaign finance regulations. Tomorrow, we will have a hearing on the proposal Tuesday, December 4th, here in council chambers, starting at 6:00 PM, I think after Councilwoman Page's hearings end. Members of the mayor's staff and representatives from the city's attorney's office will brief council and the public, as well as answer any questions on the proposed changes. For any member of the public who wished to offer testimony, please remember to fill out a speaker slip before the hearing. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, President Protem. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have two resolutions this evening. The first is Resolution 0389-X-2018. I'm going to ask Dr. Mashika Roberts and her guest to also come to the podium, please.
This resolution is to recognize World AIDS Day and to encourage Columbus Public Health and its dedicated community partners to continue their efforts to serve and to alleviate issues related to reducing HIV/AIDS and other STDs. Whereas, World AIDS Day was launched in 1988 by the World Health Organization as one of eight global public health campaigns created to raise international awareness regarding a pandemic that had claimed more than 35 million lives. The theme for 2018 was, for World AIDS Day, was "Know Your Status." Whereas, more than 12,000 residents have died from HIV or AIDS and complications in the state of Ohio since the epidemic began. Whereas, more than 21,000 Ohioans live with HIV, including more than 4,600 that reside in Franklin County. Whereas HIV and AIDS continue to plague communities around the state of Ohio. 199 new cases were reported in Franklin County in 2016. Whereas, a racial disparity exists, as African-Americans have an HIV/AIDS rate which is 4.5 times higher than whites. Whereas, the city of Columbus expresses gratitude for the significant partnerships that exist between Columbus Public Health, Equitas Health, the Faces Clinic at Nationwide Children's Hospital, and the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Each of these stakeholders come together each year on World AIDS Day, continuing the crusade to diminish their disinfection while raising community awareness. And whereas, the city of Columbus embraces its obligation to mitigate the issue for the public, for public health, safety, and the welfare of all its citizens. The city also is in the spirit of partnership and pursuant to World AIDS Day theme for 2018, encourages everyone, everyone, to know their HIV status. Now therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, if this council is hereby recognize World AIDS Day and adopt this resolution to raise awareness in the city of Columbus, and further encourages Columbus Public Health and its committed community partners to continue the crusade to reduce and address issues related to HIV, AIDS, and other STDs. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Dr. Roberts, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson, President Harden, and all members of city council. Columbus Public Health has proudly worked with our community partners, which includes Nationwide Children's Hospital, Faces Clinic, AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and Equitas Health, to help raise awareness and provide services for HIV in our community. And as you mentioned, Councilmember Tyson, this is the 30th anniversary of World AIDS Day, which was celebrated this Saturday, December 1, here in Columbus, at Nationwide Children's Hospital. The four partners, we get together every year, and we want to celebrate. And this year, the theme was celebrating the past, but really embracing the future and all the accomplishments that we've made in our community. And one of the biggest accomplishments, from a public health perspective, is the advent of PrEP, or Pre-Exposure Prophylaxis, which is a medication that individuals can take on a daily basis to help prevent contracting HIV. And so, we feel like that's a huge advancement. And when I think back to 30 years ago and where we were with HIV, who would have thought we'd be there now? And we have multiple drugs that treat HIV, and we have preventive drugs, as well as preventive behavior, obviously, that we spend a lot of time talking to residents about. So I'm joined this evening by my colleague at Columbus Public Health, Sean Hubert, as well as our partner in all this, Wynette Collins, from Nationwide Children's Hospital Faces Clinic. And again, Columbus Public Health, none of us could do this alone. It takes all of us together. And I really appreciate the support of city council. President Harden was there with us on Saturday, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate Councilmember Tyson for all of your support around HIV and STIs through the years. It's a team effort, and we need all hands on deck, because people are continuing to get infected, and this is a disease that we know we can prevent the spread of with some, you know, tweaks and behavior, maybe some medication. And so, there's much more we can do so that we can get that to zero cases and zero transmission. So thank you so much.
Any questions? Councilmember Harden, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I just want to applaud your leadership. For years, Councilmember Tyson has helped educate this council and led initiatives to support Ryan White and other funding, and has been a strong supporter of the Public Health Department and the work that your infectious disease unit is doing. Councilmember Tyson is correct in the rate of acquisition among folks that look like she and I are much higher than the rest of the population, and especially among young people that look like us. And so, just want to continue to encourage folks to get tested as well, as you spoke about PrEP and the advances that we've made. But testing still is a good thing, and applaud those who do get tested, because it is a very scary ordeal for those of us who have been tested, and just applaud those young people who, in spite of their fear, do the right thing and keep themselves and our community safe. So thank you all. Thank you, Councilmember, for your leadership, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And thank you, President Harden, for your comments, and certainly, as you just mentioned, I'm sure it is scary to go and have a test done, but you want to have it done, because there's so many treatments. I mean, it's so advanced now in terms of overall treatment to continue to extend your life, and so, but you cannot do that if you don't go and get tested. So again, thank you for, again, just continuing to mention the importance of testing, and I want to thank all of you for your leadership. I have resolutions for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next resolution, I am really just thrilled to be able to present, and it is Resolution 0390-X-2018, and I'm going to ask for Mr. Timothy Sullivan and his family to come to the podium, please. And why I'm really excited about this particular resolution, as I get ready to read it, is that this young man, he is 27 years old, and, but I happen to, my parents were that socialized with his grandparents, and so, it's so important that I know his dad, and people know when I call him Timmy, because his father's name is Timothy Senior, but we go back a long, long time, and so to see this young man and to present this and to share his accomplishments, I'm just thrilled, because, just from knowing your family. And so, this resolution is to recognize and celebrate the work and baking artistry of Mr. Timothy Timbo Sullivan, Jr., the 2018 champion of the Macy's Thanksgiving Cake Spectacular, hosted by Martha Stewart on the Food Network. Whereas, as the city of Columbus and the members of city Columbus City Council, the nation's 14th-largest city, are proud to honor and celebrate persons of distinguished character and achievement. Whereas, Mr. Timothy Timbo Sullivan, Jr., a professional cake artist, is especially deserving of this honor and recognition. He is a 2009 graduate of Mifflin Senior High School, a lifelong resident of Columbus, Ohio, began his career at what used to be the Northeast Career Center, where he began sketching, drawing fruit, and other items, and in high school, he developed into an accomplished artist, becoming known for selling T-shirts and shoes that he painted. Whereas, in 2011, Timothy, after seeing a baking show on television, developed a fascination with decorating cakes. His experiments with cake design ultimately evolved from a hobby into a full-fledged professional career. At 27, Timothy now has secured a number of contracts, which include, but not limited to, regular appearances on the Food Network and other venues. Moreover, his extensive portfolio includes features on the Food Network show Duff Till Don, hosted by Duff Goldman, Ridiculous Cakes, a body painting competition called Skin Wars, and in 2014, he made a six-foot-tall cake depicting an alien marrying a sea witch for a couple, for a couple who got married at Cosi. This was subsequently featured on the Food Network series Outrageous Wedding Cakes. Whereas Timothy, whose business trademark, Cakes by Timbo, also has an extensive international following. He has taught classes in Canada, England, Jamaica, Mexico, and he has represented the United States in the international team baking competition in Australia, which the United States, under his leadership, won. He is the third of Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan's five children. He specializes in science fiction art-related, science fiction-related arts such as monsters and creatures, and pop cultures like King Kong, Frankenstein, and others. Whereas Timothy's familiarity with the pop culture icons earned him an invitation Whereas Timothy's familiarity with the pop culture icons earned him an invitation to the two thousand and eighteen Thanksgiving Cake Spectacular, hosted by Martha Stewart on the Food Network. This Thanksgiving Day special was a competition to create, and I watch this all the time, to create a cakes that depicted the iconic balloons in the Macy's Day Parade. And the choices were the Thanksgiving Turkey, Snoopy, and Santa Claus and his flow, and the Grinch. And during that competition, the two-day cake baking competition, Timothy successfully defeated his competition and was awarded a twenty-five-thousand-dollar prize. And this is, the cake. Well, I don't know what happened to the picture that up there, but I will tell you this, if you have not seen the episode, and if you could, either you can go on, go on Facebook and look at.
The winner of Macy's Thanksgiving Cake Spectacular.
Oh.
And twenty-five-thousand dollars is.
Listen.
Timbo!
So he chose the Grinch, and the Grinch has a, you know, a Santa Claus sack on its back, but also has all this food around it, because he said that the Grinch was going and stealing food from everybody that's at the Macy's Day Parade. It is spectacular, the details. So if you go, if you have Facebook page, you go to Timbo Sullivan, you will see pictures of not only his work with the Grinch, but also some of his other really amazing work. And so, this council does hereby recognize and celebrate the work and the baking artistry of Mr. Timbo Sullivan, Jr., the two thousand and eighteen champion of the Macy's, Macy's Thanksgiving Cake Spectacular, hosted by Martha Stewart and the Food Network, and further congratulates him and wishes him really a continued long success. And I move for adoption. I move, I move to amend first.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige Reamie-Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige Reamie-Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Timothy, the floor is yours. Please introduce all your family and guests that are here, and just share some information about the competition with our viewing and listening audience.
Okay, first off, thank you guys for recognizing me today. I'm actually here with my parents, Tim and Regina Sullivan, my sisters, Tiara, Victoria, and Tamaya, my niece and nephew, Jude and Jade, and my grandparents, Gloria and Howard. I would have loved to speak before the heroes and doctors, but here we are. No, I really appreciate this. I, I'm kind of a free spirit when it comes to my journey, so I have no clue where I, what I'm doing next, and I like it that way. And so, when I was asked to do this show, it was kind of weird, because they normally called me on for, like, the weirder things, so like for Halloween shows. And so, I kind of, I turned it down at first, and they were like, no, trust us, it'll be a fun show. And so, I kind of just, I trusted the process, worked hard on it, like I have been for the past seven years. I know when I first wanted to try cake decorating, I told my parents first, and I said, hey, you guys, I think I want to do cakes. And like, I can only imagine that, like, they probably thought I would be, like, smuggling cake slices in a trench coat or something. But I worked hard and practiced. I'm known for my detail and color and airbrush and things like that. And so, also take pride in representing for Ohio and the youth in Ohio. Most of the time, I'm competing against people who are a lot older and more experienced than me. Very serious, and I'm not a serious person. Like, normally, I'll be competing with people who are in, like, full chef jackets and chef hats, and I'm just, like, with my hat to the back. But I get it done, and I do a lot, even now to this day, like, I have about, I travel the world now, teaching cake students. I do, I have about twenty students every weekend in different parts of the world, and I'm still learning myself. So as long as they keep asking me back, especially if it's surprising involved, I'm going to keep doing it.
You can see this picture on the screen, Al, with the Grinch cake and Timbo there. And so, I wanted to say to the parents, thank you, certainly, Mr. Sullivan, Senior. Again, just, just from knowing you, growing up, and just a blessing. I know your other sort of grandparents would be so proud of you, and so I'm glad that, just a blessing. There are a lot of people in this room that hopefully will be contacting you. I'm going to see Tom Katzenmeyer sitting in the back room, and they will start thinking about some artistry, some cake decorating. This is a real art talent, that we can expand what we perceive as art in this community, because that's what this is. And so, I'm pleased that he's in chambers this evening to see this. Certainly, there's opportunities, I'm going to say there to recs and parks, for young people to be able to, you know, come in, and you can have the opportunity to showcase. When we have that brand-new kitchen director, director, when we have a brand-new kitchen that will be in Linden and other places, that, to be able to go in and work with our community, and to be able to, someone from the, from the community, to be able to help to work with our young people. So, I just really, I'm just so proud of you for what you've accomplished, and our city truly wants to make sure that young people have an opportunity to continue to grow and thrive and use their skills and talents and keep you here. So, again, thank you. I'm sure you'll hear from us moving forward. Any other, any comments? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any comments by our elected officials, members of, did I see Ms. Page here, and Aaron Sink from Southside? I also saw Ms. Angela Williams, and I hear that she brought her mom local, Ashmead, I apologize, but welcome back to council. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of ordinance of resolution from consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing no, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige Reamie-Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Safety Committee, ordinance three-three-seven-one-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution three-sixty-X dash-two thousand and eighteen. Environment Committee, ordinance thirty-one-thirty-six-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, ordinance is thirty-two-fifty-one, thirty-two-sixty-nine, thirty-two-seventy, thirty-two-ninety-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Housing Committee, ordinance three-two-six-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Technology Committee, ordinance three-two-one-six-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is thirty-eleven, thirty-fifty-eight, thirty-one-oh-five, thirty-one-oh-six, thirty-one-twenty-three, thirty-one-twenty-six, thirty-one-eighty-six, thirty-one-ninety-two, thirty-one-ninety-three, thirty-one-ninety-six, thirty-two-oh-one, thirty-two-forty-eight-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance is thirty-three-eighty-one, thirty-three-sixteen, thirty-two-fifty-eight, thirty-three-eighty-six, thirty-three-seventy-eight, thirty-three-seventy-nine-dash-two thousand and eighteen. And Zoning Committee, ordinance is thirty-two-ninety-six, thirty-two-ninety-seven, thirty-two-ninety-eight, thirty-three-oh-two, thirty-three-twelve, thirty-three-thirty, and thirty-three-thirty-one-dash-two thousand and eighteen.
Seeing no speakers for first reading, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action items. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of expression, three-ninety-one-X, three-eighty-one, three-eighty-four, three-eighty-five, three-eighty-six, and three-seventy-seven-X dash-two thousand and eighteen. Finance Committee, ordinance is twenty-seven-ninety-eight, twenty-eight-sixty-five, twenty-nine-seventy-three, thirty-one-oh-four, thirty-one-fifty-six, thirty-one-fifty-seven, thirty-one-fifty-eight, thirty-two-twenty-two-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is twenty-eight-twenty, twenty-eight-twenty-three, twenty-eight-twenty-four, thirty-one-sixty-one-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is twenty-nine-ninety-eight, twenty-nine-ninety-nine, thirty-one-seventy-one, thirty-one-seventy-seven, and thirty-two-thirty-three-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution three-forty-six-X dash-two thousand and eighteen, ordinance is twenty-nine-fourteen, twenty-nine-eighteen, twenty-nine-ninety-one, thirty-six-five, thirty-eighty-six, thirty-one-twenty-two, thirty-one-sixty-five, thirty-one-seventy-six, thirty-two-oh-eight, thirty-two-twenty-six, thirty-two-thirty-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Administration Committee, ordinance is thirty-one-thirteen, thirty-two-forty-two, thirty-three-oh-nine-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, Resolution three-fifty-one-X dash-two thousand and eighteen, three-sixty-six-X, three-sixty-eight-X dash-two thousand and eighteen, and ordinances thirty-one-thirty, thirty-one-thirty-one, thirty-one-thirty-three, thirty-two-ten, thirty-two-eleven, thirty-two-sixty-four, thirty-two-seventy-one, thirty-two-eighty-five, thirty-two-eighty-six, thirty-two-eighty-seven, thirty-two-eighty-eight, thirty-two-eighty-nine, thirty-three-twenty-eight, thirty-three-twenty-nine, thirty-three-forty-five, and thirty-three-forty-six-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Housing Committee, ordinance is thirty-one-forty-six, thirty-two-twenty-three, thirty-two-twenty-four, and thirty-two-twenty-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is twenty-nine-oh-five, twenty-nine-oh-eight, thirty-one-twenty-nine, thirty-two-oh-three, and thirty-two-ninety-two-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Technology Committee, ordinance is twenty-nine-thirty-six, thirty-twenty, thirty-one-eighty-five, thirty-one-ninety-seven-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is twenty-eight-forty-eight, twenty-eight-sixty-two, twenty-nine-oh-one, twenty-nine-oh-six, twenty-nine-ten, twenty-nine-fifty-six, twenty-nine-sixty, twenty-nine-sixty-five, twenty-nine-sixty-seven, twenty-nine-seventy-five, three-thousand, three-thousand-nine, thirty-ten, thirty-fifteen, thirty-twenty-seven, thirty-thirty, thirty-thirty-five, thirty-thirty-seven, and thirty-one-seventy-three-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is twenty-nine-seventy-one, twenty-nine-ninety-seven, thirty-ninety-six, thirty-one-twelve, thirty-one-twenty-eight, thirty-one-thirty-five, and thirty-two-sixty-six-dash-two thousand and eighteen. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A-zero-two-nine-two and A-zero-two-nine-three-dash-two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance thirty-two-twenty-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen. How you doing this evening, sir?
Doing fine. Sixteen-twelve, Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, chairman of the vacant, probably North London area. I'm against four, fourteen-ninety-five Aberdeen Avenue. I just want to know how long this property has been in the land bank, and what would it be used for? And again, I'm really against this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Would, Deputy Director, would you follow up with Mr. Wilkins about the property, a part of ordinance thirty-two-twenty-five? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Seeing no further comments from, my colleagues may have a motion for approval of these items as needed as consent. May I have a second? Will the clerk please call the roll by voice, please?
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Reamie?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance thirty-two-seventy-one-dash-two thousand and eighteen, on which I am abstaining.
Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of thirty-one-twenty-eight-dash-two thousand and eighteen, and thirty-two-sixty-six-dash-two thousand and eighteen, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes. Consent action items carry. We will now move to second reading, or we will now read the second reading of thirty-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President, tonight. Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in finance, we have one ordinance, ordinance two-two-seven-five-dash-two thousand and eighteen, to authorize an appropriation of three million eight-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars in various divisions and object levels of the Community Development Block Grant Fund, to provide funding for approved programs and to declare an emergency. This legislation appropriates funding from the CDBG portion of the two thousand and nineteen action plan, which was passed at our last meeting on November nineteenth. Emergency action is being considered to prevent delays in the implementation of these critical programs. Any questions from my colleagues, comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll on thirty-two-seventy-five.
Brown, Brown, Paige Reamie-Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in Public Safety Committee, I have a series of resolutions pertaining to liquor objections. My office has been working with City Attorney Zach Klein and Assistant City Attorney Bill Spurlaza. I would like for Mr. Spurlaza to provide background into the process and provide context for each objection we are presenting this evening, answering questions as they come up. Once they've, that's been completed, we'll go through the legislation without interruption. Mr. Spurlaza, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, Chair Brown, members of council, ladies and gentlemen here tonight. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. I will start by briefly describing the process by which we come to a list of liquor permit premises to object to. We meet regularly throughout the year. Our team includes the Columbus City Attorney's Office, the Columbus Police Department, Columbus Fire, the Ohio Investigative Unit, the Health Department, Code, Building, Taxation, Licensing, the Ohio Lottery Commission, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and others. We meet regularly to discuss problem establishments and generate a preliminary list of potential objections. We continue gathering evidence throughout the year. Primary considerations involve evidence derived from inspections, compliance checks, police report reviews, calls for service data, and most importantly, community concerns. We field complaints and concerns from individual community members, civic associations, block watch groups, and many others. Decisions for suggested objections are made in early November, and ultimately, we seek to object to establishments whose operations jeopardize the safety, sobriety, health, peace, and good order of the community. We define success in these matters as liquor permits not being renewed, or a permit holder who enters into an agreement with the city to operate in a safe and legal manner. And these agreements are enforceable in the Franklin County Environmental Court. Since two thousand and twelve, we have a success rate of eighty-six-point-two percent. And perhaps the most telling fact in these numbers is that we have not lost a liquor permit renewal objection hearing in front of the Division of Liquor Control since August of two thousand and fifteen. That's over three years. So I am proud of the system that we have in place, and I believe it produces good work and good results. With that, I'll get to the resolutions. Resolution zero-three-six-seven-X dash-two thousand and eighteen is the Beechwood Market at thirty-seven-ninety-six East Livingston Avenue. This property is currently the subject of a nuisance abatement filed by the City Attorney's Office. It has had over one hundred and fifty calls for service since two thousand and sixteen. That's a tremendously high number. I will take a break here to indicate what calls for service means, that is, any time a police, Columbus Police Department cruiser, or an ambulance, or somebody from the Columbus Fire Department is called and required to, to show up at the address. That's one hundred and fifty times since two thousand and sixteen, and that's a tremendous drain on our resources. These police officers ought to be in the community, ought to be at other businesses and neighborhoods, patrolling the area. Instead, they have to come to properties like these, and it's a tremendous consideration in our world. Violence and incidents with weapons, including stabbings and firearms, were covered in two thousand and seventeen, and a robbery at gunpoint in two thousand and eighteen. In addition, soliciting for prostitution events occurring in August of two thousand and seventeen. But certainly, the biggest issue at this market is the drug trade occurring in, in the premises and on the property. We've got eleven incidents of drug activity on the property from August of twenty-seven, seventeen to August of two thousand and eighteen, including five buys by undercover police officers at this premises. We also have evidence of underage sale of alcohol, in addition to multiple building and zoning violations. Resolution zero-three-six-nine-X dash-two thousand and eighteen is the Beverage Warehouse at eight-four-seven East Eleventh Avenue. We have had two shootings at this property late last year. October of two thousand and seventeen, a shooting occurred at the property, and on December thirtieth of two- at the property, and on December thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen, a fatal shooting occurred inside the premises. This is a unique one because it's actually a liquor store, which is pretty rare for us. We have had five underage sales of alcohol at this place, including most recently in July of two thousand and eighteen. Again, at a liquor store is outstanding. That's not something we see often. In addition, forty-six calls for service in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Again, another place where a high calls for service ratio is requiring our police officers to be there way too often. Next, Resolution zero-three-seven-one X dash two thousand and eighteen is Brothers Drive-Thru at one-five-three-five East Livingston Avenue. This one has a little bit of everything. Drugs on the lot in March, April, and August of two thousand and eighteen, including arrests for possession and use of crack cocaine, and undercover crack cocaine buys by the Columbus Police Department. We've got soliciting for prostitution arrests twice in August and once in July of this year on the property as well. Got four underage sales of alcohol at the property, two illegal tobacco sales at the property, and a current investigation by the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. They are violating just about everything they are selling. We have Resolution zero-three-seven-two X dash two thousand and eighteen, which is Cookie's Place at one-six-six-two West Mound. We had a shooting at this bar in March of two thousand and eighteen. The Columbus Police Department has, in an undercover capacity, been inside the bar on three occasions and made three drug buys in March, April, and May of two thousand and eighteen. This bar has a heavy gang member influence, with documented gang members involved in promoting the club and promoting events that are being held at the club. A March inspection found drugs on the premises, drug paraphernalia on the premises, and in sanitary conditions. This property was very near abatement before it closed. However, the liquor permit is still active. It is not as it should be in safe keeping, and they can reopen it anytime they see fit. Resolution zero-three-seven-three X dash two thousand and eighteen is the Livingston Market at sixteen-nineteen East Livingston Avenue. We have a shooting there in April of two thousand and seventeen. We have a stabbing there in August of two thousand and eighteen. We've got one hundred and eight calls for service in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, including no fewer than fifteen calls for service that are specifically weapons-related. One hundred and eight calls for service for a market is about as high as I have seen in my time doing this. Forty-two total police reports taken in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Not every call for service generates a police report. If a police report is being generated, that tends to mean that there was a more severe incident that had occurred. Forty-two at this property in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, many of which include violence, drug use, guns, prostitution, and open containers in the parking lot. Underage sale of alcohol in June of this year, as well as illegal tobacco sales at this property. Save perhaps the most violent two for last, Oakland Park and Grill, Resolution zero-three-seven-five X dash two thousand and eighteen. This is at fourteen-twenty-seven Oakland Park Avenue. I have in my possession here today twenty-two letters from twenty-two different members of the community that have reached out to our office seeking that this liquor permit be objected to. Upon reflection of the record, those community members are correct. There was a homicide out of a shooting in October of two thousand and sixteen, shots fired at the premises in September of two thousand and seventeen, a second homicide out of a shooting in February of two thousand and eighteen, and another shooting in August of two thousand and eighteen. In addition, seven additional incidents of violence and guns, persons with guns, assaults with baseball bats, pull sticks, drugs on the lot, guns stolen from patrons at the property. In addition, we have evidence of underage sale of alcohol at Oakland Park and Grill. And finally, Resolution zero-three-seven-six X dash two-zero-one-eight is the Sand Pebble Lounge at nineteen-thirteen Lockborn. Again, a most violent establishment, shootings in two thousand and seventeen, August of seventeen, September of seventeen, December twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, January twenty-sixth of this year, February fifth of this year as well. The incident in December resulted in a homicide. We also have a stabbing that occurred in July of two thousand and eighteen. One hundred and seven calls for service to the Sand Pebble Lounge in two years. Multiple additional reports in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen that include rape, drugs, domestic violence, fights, severe assaults, again, baseball bats, pull sticks, things of that nature, and drugs on the lot. That concludes my testimony on the resolutions for liquor permit objections for this year, and I am here to take any questions anybody has. Thank you very much for your time.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Spurlaza? Hearing none, I will now run through the resolutions and ask for your participation in instance of the resolutions. Resolution zero-three-six-seven X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number zero-zero-three-six-nine-one-two, held by Abu Al Ashik LLC, doing business as Beechwood Market, located at three-seven-nine-six East Livingston Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-seven, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Resolution zero-three-six-nine X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number two-oh-nine-seven-seven-four-five, held by Destination to Success LLC, doing business as Beverage Warehouse, located at eight-four-seven East Eleventh Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-one-one, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Resolution zero-three-seven-one X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number zero-seven-two-seven-seven-seven-zero, held by BK Beverage Center LLC, doing business as Brothers Drive-Thru, located at fifteen-thirty-five East Livingston Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-oh-five, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Resolution zero-three-seven-two X two-oh-one-eight, to object to the renewal liquor permit number four-seven-eight-six-six-zero-five, held by Cookie Incorporated LLC, doing business as Cookie's Place, located at sixteen-sixty-two West Mound Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-three, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Resolution zero-three-seven-three X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number seven-seven-three-six-oh-four-oh, held by Saoud Inc., doing business as Livingston Market, located at sixteen-nineteen East Livingston Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-oh-five, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Resolution zero-three-six-five X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number two-eight-seven-seven-seven-zero-seven, held by fourteen-twenty-seven Oakland Park Inc., doing business as Oakland Park Bar and Grill, located at fourteen-twenty-seven Oakland Parker Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-four, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
And finally, Resolution zero-three-seven-six X twenty-eighteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number eight-five-four-six-three-zero-five, held by Stella M. Inc., doing business at Sandpiper Lounge, located at one-nine-thirteen Lockborn Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-oh-seven, and to declare an emergency, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Council President, that's all we have in public safety this evening.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number thirty-one-oh-seven twenty-eighteen, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the arterial street rehabilitation Polaris Parkway project, to authorize the expenditure of up to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and up to seven hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes payment for utility relocation work by American Electric Power, Columbia Gas of Ohio, Delco Water, and other utilities as needed in an amount up to nine hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the arterial street rehabilitation Polaris Parkway project. The Public Service Department is engaged in the arterial street rehabilitation Polaris Parkway project. Project work includes widening Polaris Parkway from I seventy-one to Old Worthington Road, constructing a five-foot-wide sidewalk on the west side of Orion Place, and on the north side of the Polaris Parkway, and constructing a ten-foot-wide shared-use path on the south side of Polaris Parkway, on the east side of Orion Place, and on the south side of Old Worthington Road. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number thirty-one-twenty-seven twenty-eighteen, to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, much thereof as may be necessary to reimburse the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for personnel costs associated with traffic sign and signal installation, permanent pavement marking applications, engineering, roadway improvement, and design and construction, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service employs personnel that are engaged in traffic sign and signal installation, permanent pavement marking application, engineering, roadway improvement, and design and construction. Project costs incurred by the operating fund are salaries, overhead, overtime, materials, and other direct costs. The Division budgets the personnel and additional costs within the Division's operating fund, the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund. These costs are capital-eligible, and doing so is consistent with earlier efforts by the Division to reimburse its operating fund when the operating fund incurred expenses more appropriate to capital improvement funding. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance number thirty-one-sixty-six twenty-eighteen, to appropriate funds within the General Government Grant Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Cascadia Consulting Group for the Recycling Program Consultant Study Contract, to authorize the expenditure of up to one hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents from the General Fund and General Government Grant Fund for the contract, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance requests council's approval to enter into professional services contract with Cascadia Consulting Group, Inc., for the Recycling Program Consultant Study Contract, and to provide funding for the contract. Landfill diversion requirements are established by the Ohio Revised Code. Continuation of a separate collection for these items is necessary to segregate yard waste and recyclables that can be composted and recycled from the regular waste stream. This serves to extend the life of the landfill operated by the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio. The city, along with SUECO and other regional municipalities, have identified challenges to recycling programs and have identified areas to explore where opportunities may exist for increased participation and service, reduced cost, and reduced contamination of the collected recyclable materials. The intent of the Recycling Program Consultant Study is to prepare and execute a study of the City of Columbus's recycling program to develop benchmark evaluation tools and metrics, evaluate opportunities for recycling program expansion, evaluate opportunities for increased regional collaboration, recommend strategies to increase recycling participation, and identify strategies to address regional challenges to recycling. In addition to working with the City of Columbus staff, Cascadia Consulting Group will also be expected to work with regional stakeholders, including but not limited to the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance thirty-one-ninety-one twenty-eighteen, to amend the twenty-eighteen capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with GNG Concrete Construction for the resurfacing twenty-eighteen Brick Repair Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with GNG Concrete Construction for the resurfacing twenty-eighteen Brick Repair Project, and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services. The contract consists of repairing seven city streets. The work consists of repairing and replacing brick bases and surface courses, and other such work as may be necessary to complete the contract in accordance with the drawings, technical specifications, plans at eighteen-thirty-five drawer A, and City of Columbus' construction and material specifications set forth for the invitation forbid. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation. With your permission, I'll move on to Administration.
Please.
Thank you very much. Tonight in Administration, we have ordinance number thirty-three-hundred twenty-eighteen, to accept the recommendations of the Citizens Commission on Elected Official Compensation, and to amend the Management Compensation Plan by amended sections five-E-C-one-eighty, City Attorney E. five-E-C-one-eighty-five, City Auditor E. five-E-C-two-fifteen, City Council Member five-E-C-two-twenty, City Council President, and five-E-M-O-ninety, Mayor, and to declare an emergency. In November two thousand and fourteen, Columbus voters approved a series of ballot initiatives which amended the Columbus City Charter. Included among the changes was a mandate to establish a Citizens Commission on Elected Official Compensation to review and recommend the salary for each elective office of the city, with the underlying goal of increasing citizen engagement and adding an additional layer of accountability to the process of setting future pay rates for elected officials in Columbus. The two thousand and fifteen Citizens Commission on Elected Official Compensation issued its report and recommendations on June two thousand and fifteen, and the commission recommendations were enacted by City Council pursuant to ordinance thirty-one-eighty-five twenty-fifteen for the years two thousand and sixteen through twenty-twenty-one. In January two thousand and eighteen, Mayor Andrew Ginter and City Council President Shannon Harden formed the two thousand and eighteen Citizens Commission on Elected Officials Compensation as required under section fifteen-two of the Columbus City Charter, and charged them with reviewing compensation for the mayor, city council members, city council president, city attorney, and city auditor, and make salary recommendations, including an annual cost of living adjustment to not exceed the average increase in the Consumer Price Index over the preceding four years. Commission members included Fred Ransier, the chair from partner at Voorhees Sater Seymour &amp; Peas, Joel Diaz, Chief Marketing and Community Affairs Officer of Equitas Health, Deanna Guyvan, Associate Denzmore &amp; Scholl LLP, Kiana Williams, Human Resources Director at Ohio Health, Robert J. Wyler, Sr., Chair of the Board of the Robert Wyler Company. The two thousand and eighteen Compensation Commission held seven meetings before finalizing recommendations for the salary of each elective official of the city. Under the Columbus Charter, setting elected official salaries will still require a public vote of City Council. Council may accept and enact the commission's recommendation in whole or in part. Council may enact all the recommendations as submitted, some of the recommendations as submitted, or may enact an amount less than recommended. However, council is prohibited from enacting any amount greater than the recommendations. The salary for all City of Columbus elected officials were set in ordinance number thirty-one-eighty-five twenty-eighteen pursuant to City Charter section fifteen. Salaries for these positions cannot be increased or diminished during an elected official's term in office. This ordinance amends the Management Compensation Plan, MCP, to set salaries for the mayor, city auditor, city council members, city council president, and the city attorney for years twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much, President Harden. That's all I have in Administration.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development and Small Business, we have ordinance twenty-nine-ninety-three twenty-eighteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive agreement with Installed Building Products Incorporated for a term of up to five consecutive years in consideration of the company's proposed capital investment of six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, the retention of one hundred and forty-five jobs, and the creation of fifty-two net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately three point thirty-two million dollars. Are there any additional comments from the Director? Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thirty-one eighteen twenty-eighteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Ohio Power Company for a property tax abatement of seventy-five percent for a period of ten consecutive years in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately twenty-two million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, of which approximately sixteen million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars will be related to the construction of an approximately eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square-foot transmission service center complex, retention of sixty full-time jobs, and the creation of four net new full-time permanent positions. We do have a speaker speaking against this ordinance this evening, Mr. Joe M. We do have a speaker speaking against this ordinance this evening, Mr. Joe Motil. Welcome to council. Again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing as well.
President Harden, pro tem Stenziano, Chairwoman Page, members of City Council. Joe Motil resides at 167 West Cook Road in Columbus. This $3.7 million corporate welfare check, AEP, is in stark contrast to the next tax abatement that will be handed out this evening for $1.2 million. Why does the City Council continue to provide unnecessary financial relief on the backs of the taxpayers to the likes of AEP and other local Fortune 500-billion-dollar companies like UPS, The Ball Corporation, Nationwide, Big Lots, McKesson Subsidiary, Cover My Meds, Alliance Data Systems, and others? AEP with revenues of $16 billion and a market cap of $38 billion is generating more cash than they are electricity. As stated in your Ohio Power Project History Summary, they provide electric power to about 1.5 million customers in Ohio and have a presence in 61 out of 88 of our counties. AEP is one of the largest electric utility companies in the United States. So is the reason for this taxpayer subsidy because there is a concern for AEP Ohio Power to shut its doors, abandoning their power distribution centers or move to Mexico? Or is it because you are going to reward them for retaining the 60 jobs of their employees, and by the way, without them, AEP could not operate this new transmission center? Or like some other charitable tax abatements that the City Council has granted, you are justifying it because this Fortune 500 company is going to add an entire four jobs to its payroll while adding $6,400 in annual income tax? So let's be honest about this. AEP Ohio Power is getting a handout because its corporate headquarters is located here in Columbus. And like any billion-dollar corporation, they are swimming in cash, and as a good business practice, they give back some of that cash to the communities where they're located, but also expect something in return. But not only do they give back to the community, but AEP executives also give back in the form of tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions to city hall politicians. And you all know how your bread is buttered, so heaven forbid any of you put your foot down and do the right thing and say no to this unreasonable request. But as your voting records on these types of tax abatements are rather predictable, your vote will continue to have an irreparable impact on funding of our children's education, increased property taxes that are driving those on fixed incomes out of their homes in gentrified neighborhoods and elsewhere. And when passed this evening, City Council will have approved just over $262 million in tax abatements over the past three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. And you can stay up here. I know you're speaking on the next ordinance. Director Shoney, any additional comments?
Thank you, Chair Page. President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, members of council. To clarify a couple of things, this was not something where we had competition from Mexico or out of state. We had competition locally from other locations around Central Ohio. So there was a need for the City of Columbus to remain competitive from a cost basis. That's the only other comment I'll add.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3120-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Fortuity Holding LLC and Fortuity Calling LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of a total proposed capital investment of approximately $12.44 million, the retention of two full-time jobs, and the creation of 125 new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $3.62 million. Mr. Motil, you are speaking for this ordinance. Again, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Unlike the previous tax abatement that was given to a Fortune 500 billion-dollar corporation and large city hall campaign contributor, this $1.2 million tax savings appears to be more in line with the original purpose on how tax abatements were intended to be used. And that is to target distressed areas in order to increase economic development and to provide jobs for areas of high unemployment. Unfortunately, though, the city hall's blanketing basically the entire city with tax abatements has diluted these benefits by continuing to grant tax abatements where they are not needed while targeting more specific neighborhoods. But I am encouraged by this social enterprise call center, and I hope that it will be successful in helping to lift up those in need of jobs in addition to providing other necessary job-related needs like childcare and job training. But I do have some questions. I would like to know if local workforce development agencies are actively pursuing their clients and/or in communication with various Franklinton churches and other organizations to recruit potential Franklinton and Hilltop employees, not exclusively, and who is going to monitor such activities to make sure that this is being carried out? And has the city, county, or Fortuity Calling LLC been working with COTA in order to provide special arrangements for frequent and timely bus routes to and from this facility? Is Mount Carmel willing to provide any type of special parking rates in their parking garage for any employees at the call center as well? And that's all I wanted to talk about. Again, my concern is really, is there a mechanism in place to assure this? I know there's a lot of workforce development programs. Councilwoman Tyson, you're very familiar with those. And I just want to make sure that somebody is indeed making sure that they are seeking out those clients that live in those areas, not exclusively, but making sure this is being done properly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. You have about a minute. Are you...
No, that's all.
Okay. Thank you so much. A Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, members of In terms of...I'll answer Mr. Motil's questions quickly. In terms of whether there will be a local workforce development element, actually, one of the things that the folks from Fortuity are doing is they are actually bringing a new workforce development program into the city and housing it within this development. It's one of the things that really attracted us to this project, in addition to providing space for some unique and innovative childcare programs and sick child daycare and a number of things. To his question about bus routes, that was one of the reasons this location was actually chosen, because there are already high-frequency bus routes that attach to the neighborhoods that Fortuity is planning to recruit from. In terms of monitoring, we will be doing monitoring. We have a number of agreements, not only this agreement, the next piece is a companion piece in terms of our jobs incentive. And last week, council approved a whole EDA that laid out a number of different things. So there will be monitoring through all of that. And in terms of whether Mount Carmel is offering a parking incentive, they are actually...I think Mount Carmel is selling Fortuity a parking garage at a reasonable price. So I think I answered all of his questions, and happy to agree with Mr. Motil on a piece for once.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. And to the Director, I just appreciate your work on this initiative. Certainly to be able to provide the workforce development, the training for the call center, excited about, you know, well, baby care, childcare, you know, all the issues that we hear about why individuals cannot move forward. And so having the transportation with the COTA bus and parking, et cetera, I just want to commend you and Fortuity for having an understanding of what's needed in a community in terms of workforce development. Hopefully, this will be successful. We're hoping it will be successful, that then we could also look at how something...we could do something like this in some other communities that are in need of workforce. So congratulations on the job well done. Thanks, Chairwoman Page.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and I echo your sentiments as well. I'm really excited to be sponsoring this legislation and for the work and vision that Fortuity has, and thank you, Director, for working with them. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And the companion piece, 3121-2018, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a job creation tax credit agreement with Fortuity Holding LLC and Fortuity Calling LLC for a tax incentive of 60% for a period of six consecutive years in consideration of a total proposed capital investment of approximately $12.44 million, retention of two full-time jobs, and the creation of 125 new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $3.62 million. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3132-2018 to authorize the appropriation of $2,011,696 from the unappropriated balance of the Land Management Fund to the Department of Development to provide funds for the administration of the Land Redevelopment Division for budget year 2019, and to declare an emergency. This is the legislation to support our city land bank. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3263-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to apply for and accept a grant from the Road Work Development 629 account of the Ohio Development Services Agency valued at up to $1 million for costs associated with the completion of public road work improvements in support of the expansion of operations by Cover My Meds LLC, and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden, if I may move to the Housing Committee?
Sure.
We have five pieces this evening that are all with...
But you're...
Tonight in Housing, we have five land bank conveyances being transferred to H&amp;H F Realty Collaborative, which is our Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families Initiative, which began in 2008. This initiative composed of faith-based organizations, community development organizations, youth-serving nonprofits, and local public schools that seeks to create positive health outcomes in the community. And before I read through the five pieces, I would like to ask Director Shoney if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, Chair Page, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano. I could wax poetic for an extended period of time about our partnership with Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families. It is a model not only for our city, but I think for around the country. We are moving with them toward making sure that we have really the correct mix. We always talk about having mixed-income neighborhoods, and we're partnering with Reverend Edgar and his team to make sure that we're achieving that goal on the south side. So, thank you.
Thank you. 3277-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 722 Duschl Avenue, held in the land bank pursuant to the land utilization program, and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row. Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3278-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 1179 Ann Street, held in the land bank pursuant to the land utilization program, and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3279-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 1183 Ann Street, held in the land bank pursuant to the land utilization program, and to declare an emergency. No questions or comments. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3280-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 1092 South 22nd Street, held in the land bank pursuant to the land utilization program, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
3281-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 765 Reinhardt Avenue, held in the land bank pursuant to the land utilization program, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all we have in Housing this evening.
That is all. Thank you, Chair Page. May I have a motion for recess of meeting number 61?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is recessed. We will move to zoning momentarily. Record of meeting number 62 will now come to order. The clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
No.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs this committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pretending to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will. Thank you. First ordinance is 3217-2018 to rezone 3522 West Dublin Grandville Road, being 2.54 acres located at the southwest corner of West Dublin Grandville Road and Federated Boulevard, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is 3540 WWDG LLC, Care of Jeffrey L. Brown. The proposed use is a commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Far Northwest Coalition recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3218...that's 2018, I'm sorry, to rezone 1367 Frank Road, being 0.70 acres located on the south side of Frank Road, 500 feet west of Hardy Parkway Street, from R1 Residential District to M Manufacturing District. The applicant is Cheryl Haas-Halter. The proposed use is an industrial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Southwest Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 5 to 3. I first move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3219-2018 to grant a variance in provisions of section 3312.27, parking setback line of the Columbus City Code for a property located at 1367 Frank Road, to permit a reduced parking setback line in the M Manufacturing District. The applicant is Cheryl Haas-Halter. The proposed use is an industrial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Southwest Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 5 to 3. I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3229-2018 to grant a variance from provisions of sections 3363.01, manufacturing districts 3312.25 maneuvering, and 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Code for a property located at 88 West Frankfurt Street, to permit a two-unit dwelling in the M Manufacturing District with reduced development standards. The applicant is Frank Bank LLC, Care of Dave Perry Company. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Buery District Commission's recommendation is approval, 4 to 1. There are no questions or comments. I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
The next ordinance is 3231-2018 to grant a variance from provisions of sections 3332.037, R2F Residential District, 3312.27 parking setback line, 3332.21 building lines, 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Code for a property located at 954 Gilbert Street, to permit a five-unit apartment building with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is Julie Bullock. The proposed use is a five-unit apartment building. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, the next ordinance is thirty-two, thirty-nine, dash, two thousand and eighteen to rezone three-forty-one East Barthman Avenue, being point-three-nine acres located on the southwest corner of East Barthman and South Washington's avenues from R-two Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is ZG Barthman LLC, care of Sean Mental. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, the next ordinance is thirty-two, fifty-five, dash, two thousand and eighteen to rezone sixteen-ninety-six Astor Avenue, being point-five-two acres located on the north and south sides of Astor Avenue, two-hundred-and-fifteen feet west of Bryce Road, from R-one Residential District to R-two-F Residential District. The applicant is Greg Chafont. The proposed use is a two-unit dwell, is two-unit dwellings. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, eight to zero. I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And that concludes my zoning this evening.
Thank you Chair Tyson, may I get a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Zoning meeting adjourned, we will reconvene council meeting number sixty-one momentarily. Have a motion to reconvene meeting number sixty-one? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
We now will move to the Judiciary Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Page. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Harden. This evening in judiciary and court administration, we have ordinance twenty-eighty-three, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the mayor to accept U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program Funding totaling two million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to appropriate award funds to Columbus City Attorney, Columbus Public Health, Columbus Division of Fire, Columbus Recreation and Parks, and Franklin County Municipal Court to support opiate action plan implementation and evaluation. To authorize the appropriation of two million six hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars from the unappropriated balance of the General Government Grants Fund twenty-two-twenty and to declare an emergency. The City of Columbus received three U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program Awards. And COAP funding will enhance and expand critical prevention intervention in data-driven action designed to promote successful implementation of the Franklin County Opiate Action Plan for the period of October first, two thousand and eighteen, through September thirty of two thousand and twenty-one. Under this initiative, funding will expand trauma and resource coordination supports available to children and other family members impacted by overdose and enhanced treatment and recovery support available to both to justice-involved individuals who start medication-assistance treatment under jail supervision. There are no additional questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thirty-one, ninety-nine, twenty-eighteen. To authorize and direct the City Attorney to settle the lawsuit known as Akila Pendergrass versus City of Columbus et al. pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio Eastern Division, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of ninety thousand dollars in settlement of this lawsuit and to declare an emergency. And we have with us this evening Solicitor General of the City Attorney's Office Laura Becker-Morris, who will provide additional detail about this settlement.
Thank you Chair Page. This particular case was initiated in August of two thousand and seventeen, and arises out of an incident that occurred on August ninth of two thousand and sixteen. At that time, the Columbus Division of Police Officers entered the residence of Ms. Pendergrass in search of an armed robbery suspect. Several officers made an arrest of the robbery suspect and then attempted to secure the residence for a search warrant. During the commotion that created when several individuals attempted to re-enter the home, an officer used a two-level-one uses of force against Ms. Pendergrass and her son in an attempt to secure the residence for the search warrant. Ultimately, the victim of the robbery declined to press charges and the home was released. Medical records reveal that Ms. Pendergrass suffered a probable non-displaced fracture of a bony outgrowth of her left scapula or her shoulder blade as a result of the incident. She has incurred substantial medical expenses and has been on documented disability or had been on documented disability for over ninety-four weeks. This case was referred by the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio for mediation, and the settlement that is being proposed here this evening was a result of the settlement negotiations that occurred during that mediation. If there are no further questions.
Thank you Attorney Becker-Morris. Are there Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Thank you Councilwoman Page. City Attorney, was that mediation part of public safety? Were they engaged in the determination?
Yes, they were. This particular settlement negotiation was discussed with Deputy Director Speaks, and it has been approved by the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you Chair Page. In a situation like this, do we also then ask for additional training for the officers? Or is it just, can you just kind of share more about this situation?
Councilmember Tyson, I'm afraid I don't have additional information regarding that at this time, but I can certainly speak with the attorney who negotiated the settlement and get back to you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have President Harden.
Thank you Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Committee. President Pro Tem Stenziano chairs that committee. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you Council President. At this time, I'd like to invite the Thurber House Board President, Xena Pelus, to the podium as I read ordinance three-zero-eight-two, dash, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Thurber House in support of the Year of Thurber Program and to authorize an appropriation expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. In two thousand and nineteen, Thurber House is going to have the wonderful opportunity of celebrating their one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday of James Thurber and the thirty-fifth anniversary of Thurber House. As you all and we know, James Thurber's legacy is one of the foremost humorists and artists of the twentieth century, will be celebrated by the city that raised him and the world that loves him. This support of Thurber House will allow the organization to broaden its impact and honor one of the city's most celebrated native sons across the city. I'll now turn it over to the Board President for further comments.
Thank you. Thank you President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and members of council and everyone else. This is like a reunion for me because about twenty-some-odd years ago, I was standing here thanking everybody for my tenure during my time at risk management. So, this is like, hi everybody I know. And I'd like to make it clear that I am not James Thurber, even though I have gray hair, I'm not one-hundred-and-twenty-five years old. When you write a book, first you hope it makes sense, and second you hope someone will read it. When that happens, everything else is a dream. Winning the Thurber Prize is something I never could have dreamed of. Those are Trevor Noah's words when he accepted the two thousand and seventeen Thurber Prize in New York City. Thanks to the support of council tonight, and to a number of people in the community and the community at large, corporate individuals and more, we are bringing the Thurber Prize recognition back to Columbus. In fact, this Wednesday, the event will be held at the Athenaeum. The Year of Thurber will officially be launched this Wednesday, and it's something we at Thurber House never dreamed of. The overall support from this community has been outstanding. Because of our programs, we have become the literary center for laughter, learning, and literature. That's, that was my attempt at laughter, trying to make reference to, okay. I'll leave it to the writers. But on behalf of all my colleagues from the board, the Thurber House staff, they're an amazing group of people, and thanks to you for your support, the Year of Thurber programming will be incredible. It is going to be citywide. Not unlike the Harlem Renaissance Celebration where organizations partnered, we too are going to be partnering with individual groups in Columbus, including OSU with the Billy Ireland Cartoon Library, with the Columbus Metropolitan Library, the Columbus Museum of Art where we will showcase some of Thurber's artwork, thanks to the Thurber family members. But beyond the one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday that Thurber would have celebrated had he still been alive, the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Thurber Center, I want all of you to check into our programs that have made us so successful. A little unknown piece of trivia that you, that I was going to address, City Auditor Megan Kilgore, she is a spelling bee champion. She could go to the Thurber House and become an adult writer if she took one of our programs. Or President Pro Tem Stenziano, your children could attend some children's writing workshops. But we have other programs that you can attend. The evenings with authors, where we bring in some spectacular authors such as Trevor Noah, such as Jane Pauley, Garrison Keillor, Will Haygood, and our summer picnic series, which you can enjoy a nice picnic on the side lawn at the Thurber House. You will enjoy that also in the coming year, in two thousand and nineteen and beyond. But I really will extend my heartfelt thanks on behalf of all of us at Thurber, and probably more importantly, the children in this community who are going to benefit from writing and learning how to write, from people who can laugh and laugh from deep within, and from all of us who can appreciate literature. The Thurber House is a prize here in Columbus, and James Thurber made it happen, and we're continuing his legacy. So, thank you.
Thank you Madam President. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I do want to point out, the previous spelling bee champion is Councilmember Brown, so there's something about City Hall and not letting me spell that helps bring champions back.
She wasn't wearing the crown.
If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all we have in Neighborhoods, I'll move on to Technology.
Please.
Tonight in Technology, I have ordinance three-three-three, three-three-three-four, dash, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into a contract with Condenza LLC for the purchase of a new data center network solution, to authorize the expenditure of one million five hundred and thirty-one thousand thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding will be used to upgrade the city's core data center networking platform as recommended by technology site planners. The platform consists of a number of hardware, software licenses, and professional implementation services necessary to replace the city's core data center network equipment. Implement technologies to adopt the software-defined networking platform, services for implementation of the platform, and software maintenance for the first year of a five-year term. The ordinance is written as emergency to avoid price increases related to any two thousand and nineteen federal Trump administration tariffs. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
I just report what the department tells me sometimes, Councilmember. That's all we have in Technology, I'll move on to Public Utilities. Tonight in Public Utilities have ordinance two-nine-zero-three, dash, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Musson Brothers Incorporated for the downspout redirection Clintonville-One Cook-Glenmont lateral lining projects. To authorize the appropriation, transfer, and expenditure of one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund for the lateral lining Clintonville-One Cook-Glenmont Project, and authorize the expenditure of up to one million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund for the downspout redirection Clintonville-One Cook-Glenmont Project, which includes two thousand for the cost of prevailing wage administration fees and amends the two thousand and eighteen capital improvement budget. The combined project total is three million four hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The work for these projects consists of redirecting downspouts from homes to discharge to the street, lining two hundred and sixty-seven sanitary sewer laterals in the neighborhood. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Next ordinance two-nine-two-four, dash, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew an existing professional engineering agreement with Orchidis U.S. Incorporated for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Congeneration Project, to authorize the transfer within of one million seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and the expenditure of up to two million three hundred nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend the two thousand and eighteen capital improvements budget. The Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant creates a large amount of methane-rich digester biogas, which is now burned and flares as a waste product. A recent feasibility study shows that installing a cogeneration system can beneficially use this biogas as fuel to create electricity that will supply about half the total electricity the plant uses and significantly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The updated lifecycle cost analysis from shows a savings in electrical costs, which helps to offset the capital and operating costs of this improvement. The system will reduce overhaul greenhouse emissions by more than four thousand tons a year of equivalent CO2. This project includes designing stormwater retention best practices, and these improvements will continue to help the water quality of the Scioto River. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And the last ordinance in Public Utilities, three-two-zero-two, dash, twenty-eighteen. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with H&amp;T B Corporation with a smart street lighting project and to authorize an expenditure up to one million eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and five cents within the Electricity General Obligation Bonds Fund for the Division of Power. This project will convert the entire city of Columbus's existing streetlight system into a smart lighting system. The majority of the city's existing streetlight fixtures will be replaced with LED equivalents over several years. Smart lighting will allow the Division to monitor the lighting system to ensure that's operating correctly. Power outages will be immediately captured rather than being informed via complaint. Additionally, the existing high-pressure sodium lights will be replaced with LED technology, which will generate savings, electricity, and long-term maintenance, which will be a significant economic impact and reduce, again, greenhouse gases in the environment. The project will be conducted in several phases, with phase one beginning in our Linden neighborhood. If no questions or comments from my colleague? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, sir. Director, could you, what do you project the savings to be with regards to moving to digital lighting and all that good stuff that we hear?
President Harden, Vice Chair Stenziano, or Chair Stenziano, Members of Council, Councilmember Brown, we don't have that projection yet. This is the initial phase that will design the entire street lighting system, the smart street lighting system throughout the city, with, as the chairman mentioned, a focus on the Linden area. But once we have that total design outlined, then we'll be able to better effectively decide what the cost savings will be by switching to the smart technology.
Is the plan to do this throughout, by sections of the city, or?
Yes, we haven't decided what sections we'll go to next. Again, this is to design the entire system, with the first installation being in the Linden neighborhood, but tying into other smart systems through the Department of Public Services CTSS system and tying into Smart Columbus, we're hoping to have some cost savings.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
Councilmember Remy.
And Director, these will, or this is the type of system that will collect data off of the mastheads or the lightheads, is that what the intention is eventually, or no?
We're having our consultant evaluate what all the options are. We don't know at this point what the smart street lighting will give us. We want them to evaluate all the technology that's out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Director, I applaud our council's enthusiasm for street lighting. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige Remy, Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all we have in Public Utilities.
Thank you Chair Stenziano. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you President Harden. I have ordinance number thirty-one, sixty-one, dash, two thousand and eighteen, and I'm going to ask Mary Howard, the Executive Director of the Ohio State University Hospital East, to come to the podium. Also, I want to recognize Annie Marsco in council chambers, you're coming up to, no, she's just going to take the pictures. And so, ordinance number thirty-one, sixty-four, dash, two thousand and eighteen is to authorize a Board of Health to enter into a contract with the Ohio State University Hospitals for medication-assisted treatment, known as MAT, services for the Columbus Public Health Addiction Services Program, and to authorize the expenditure of fifty thousand dollars from the Health Special Revenue Fund and to pay costs thereof and to declare an emergency. And I don't know, Ms. Howard, if you want to... Howard, if you want to go ahead and speak on this legislation, and I can share additional comments after you're completed.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you Chair Tyson, President Hardin, and members of council for allowing me to speak on ordinance three one six four twenty eighteen. As Ms. Tyson has indicated, my name is Mary Howard. I serve as the Executive Director of OSU's University Hospital East. And given the dramatic increase in heroin and opioid-related overdoses, the need for greater access to substance-use treatment medication is significant. At OSU Wexner Medical Center, we believe that expanding opportunities for medication-assisted treatment, or MAT, is the next step in our community's fight against opioid overdoses. MAT is the use of medications, for those who aren't aware, in combination with counseling and behavioral therapies for the treatment of substance-use disorders. MAT for substance-use disorders has proven to be clinically effective, cost-effective, and to significantly reduce the use of inpatient detox services. The use of MAT in the hospital setting is really gaining traction, and we are partnering on a number of initiatives to initiate the number of providers that have proper waiver and training that allows them to administer MAT. OSU Wexner Medical Center is currently using MAT at our East Hospital in our Emergency Department, and we will be expanding it to the Emergency Department on our main campus in two thousand and nineteen. We are also utilizing MAT in our Step Clinic and at Talbot Hall. Talbot Hall's, our University Hospital East, has provided high-quality, comprehensive drug and alcohol addiction recovery services in central Ohio since nineteen seventy-four. Physicians and staff that are trained in the latest clinical techniques and proven treatment methods. We offer both outpatient and patient therapy, and we're proud that one of our APRNs, our Advanced Practice Nurses from Talbot, will be using his or her skills and experiences to administer MAT at the Columbus Public Health. Providing Columbus residents an additional place where they can receive this treatment will address two different planks of the twenty sixteen Community Health Needs Assessment, improving access to care and mental health and addiction. So, your residents and our patients are best served when they can get easy access to quality health care that they need, and we are very proud to be given the opportunity to be a part of this by partnering with Columbus Public Health and the city's Addiction Services Program. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak, and please let me know if you have any questions for me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Howard, for coming down and so having this partnership with Columbus Public Health. I'm going to ask if Dr. Mashika Roberts would like to make some additional comments.
Yes, thank you Chair Tyson and Council President Hardin. We are very appreciative of OSU Wexner Medical Center and their East Campus in Talbot Hall for partnering with us on this. We have been providing addiction, alcohol, and drug service treatment for some time in the counseling form, and with the opioid epidemic, we thought it was important to add the medical assisted treatment to, for our clients so they could potentially do a one-stop shop. We have many of our clients who come to us for counseling and have to go elsewhere to get their medical assisted treatment, and we wanted to provide it in-house. And after looking at the economics of this, it was much more favorable for us and for taxpayers to partner with someone who already had this expertise. And so, we looked at several different agencies, and Talbot Hall really met our needs for what we have at this time. And so, we're grateful that they had an interest and their willingness to partner with us, and we believe this will increase access not only for the clients we currently serve in our Alcohol and Drug Services Program, but also for other community members who might want access to medical assisted treatment, and they can come to Columbus Public Health and get not only the MAT or the medical assisted treatment, but also the counseling. And as Ms. Howard mentioned, it's important to have a combination of both the counseling and the medical treatment as well.
Thank you Dr. Roberts, and I have some other statistics to add to your comments, but during the period between January one of two thousand and eighteen, October one of two thousand and eighteen, Columbus Public Health, the Alcohol and Drug Services Treatment Program served six hundred and thirteen clients, and ninety-two of those clients were assessed as having a primary diagnosis of opioid dependence. And so, many of these clients received services from those medically, medication-assisted treatment elsewhere. So, to be able to have that in-house will be tremendous because you don't want to have individuals have to go somewhere else to get treatment. They oftentimes will not go and get the additional treatment. So, it's a, it's a great partnership, and if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I would move for passage of this, of the ordinance for the fifty thousand dollars for the MAT program.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number thirty-one seventy-five dash two thousand and eighteen, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents for the STD Control Program, and to authorize the appropriation of two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The STD Grant Program enables Columbus Public Health to identify and prevent sexually transmitted diseases through gonorrhea, cultural screening, syphilis elimination, and partner services. Additionally, Columbus Public Health assures the quality of medical and laboratory services, surveillance, partner services, and data management. All activities are conducted with a special emphasis on populations at high risk, such as correction facilities, organizations focusing on adolescents, and managed care settings. Each person who is newly diagnosed with HIV or syphilis from throughout central Ohio receives an education about their infection and may be referred to for care. If there are any, any viewing or listening audiences, in the viewing or listening audience, you can please call Audrey Regan at six one four six four five six seven nine zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-one eighty-nine dash two thousand and eighteen, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Child Injury Prevention Grant, to authorize the appropriation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriate balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This project will work with the Franklin County Suicide Coalition to develop a strategic plan to decrease youth suicides in Franklin County, and will assist the Coalition with the implementation of evidence-based strategies. The other component of this grant program is to promote a creation of policies for the Child Passenger Safety Toolkit, work with Franklin County agencies to implement the policies, and work more in depth with Franklin County Car Seat Fitting Stations to increase the community's awareness and availability of locations that the public can get their car seats checked by a certified child, certified passenger safety technician. The youth suicide component for the, the target audience in Franklin County are children and teens from six years old to seventeen years old. Children and teens will be served by the planning and implementation of these strategies. There are approximately two hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five children and teens in Franklin County that could be served or impacted by this grant. And again, the majority of these strategies will consist of working with Franklin County schools to implement programming for their students. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final piece in, in Health and Human Services is ordinance number thirty-two ninety-nine dash two thousand and eighteen, and is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents for the HIV Prevention Grant Program, to authorize the appropriation of one million four hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents from the unappropriated balance of the Ohio Department Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The HIV Prevention Grant Program enables Columbus Public Health to provide culturally and logistically, linguistically appropriate HIV counseling, testing, and referral, partner counseling, health education, and risk reduction behavior modification programs. Services are provided to the residents of Columbus and Franklin County with special emphasis on men who have sex with men, individuals with high-risk sexual contact, youth, and injection drug abuse users. Last year, approximately one thousand at-risk, approximately one thousand at-risk individuals are screened for HIV and syphilis, chlamydia, and gonorrhea in this community, and screening services are prioritized for, on men who have men, men who have men, who have sex with men, transgender and gender non-conforming individuals, and individuals with high-risk sexual contact, and with youth. Within all this community, efforts are made to assure that services are available to persons of color. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Pass.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Rules and Reference.
Please.
Thank you. The first ordinance is ordinance three thousand six dash two thousand and eighteen, to amend sections thirty-three, thirty-two point three seven, thirty-three, thirty-three point three four, thirty-three, forty-five point one six, and thirty-three, forty-seven point one to the Columbus zoning code Title thirty-three, to prohibit the sale or transfer of firearms in residential zoning districts. I'm going to ask Director Messer to please give some comments on this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson, President Hardin, members of council. Currently, the zoning code already contains provisions stating that while certain home occupations are allowed in residential homes, wholesale and retail sales are prohibited. This legislation is merely being passed, requested to be passed to clarify that the sale or transfer of firearms would be included in that restriction on retail or wholesale sales in a residential neighborhood.
Thank you Director Messer. Any questions or comments for Director Messer? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance I have in Rules and Reference this evening is ordinance number thirty-two thirty-three dash two thousand and eighteen, is to supplement the Columbus Zoning Code Title thirty-three by amending various code sections to specify which zoning districts permit the various land uses associated with the Ohio Medical Marijuana Control Program and to enact section thirty-three eighty-nine point one one five, requiring a special permit from the Board of Zoning Adjustment for an Ohio Medical Marijuana Control Program dispensary. Director Messer, would you want to provide some comments on this legislation?
Sure. Councilmember Tyson, President Hardin, council. As you know, the Ohio Medical Marijuana Control Program is primarily a state program. The state of Ohio determines and regulates participants and implements the guidelines. The purpose of this legislation at the city level is threefold and is related to Columbus city zoning. First of all, the legislation provides definitions for the four types of medical marijuana operations. It also clarifies which zoning districts are permissible for each of those operation types, and as you mentioned, requires a special permit for those operations. That process will allow for notification to area commissioners, nearby neighbors of the intended use, and approval through the Board of Zoning Adjustment for special permit. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
And Director, could you please just share that the businesses that I will be working in within Columbus, that that was, can you just talk about that process of how that happened?
Sure. So, the uses, as I mentioned, are cultivator, processor, a dispensary, and a testing laboratory. All of those, various uses were approved by the state of Ohio. So, each person who's going to operate in any of those categories had to get permission from the state of Ohio, and will have to follow all the rules and regulations that the state of Ohio is implementing in that process. But they do need zoning approval from the city of Columbus to locate in certain areas. And so, this legislation is really clarifying some of the regulations around the zoning.
Thank you Director Messer. Any questions or comments? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business before council, I would first like to wish everyone observing the Hanukkah holiday, a happy Hanukkah, and I would like to seek a motion for adjournment. Please call a roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Hardin.
This meeting is adjourned. We will take non-agenda speakers momentarily.